Good evening. Welcome to Livonia Public Schools Board of Education Meeting Committee of the Whole of May 1st, 2017. Thank you all for joining us. This evening's meeting is a committee of the whole and by that we mean this is going to be a discussion meeting. We're going to have many items that are going to come before the board this evening. All of them will be discussed probably at length. However, we will not be taking any votes on any item this evening. Whatever items this evening are ready to come for a vote, that the board has consensus, that we have all the information that's necessary, and we're ready to move forward to vote on these items, they will be placed on the agenda for next week's, actually two weeks from now, for our general or voting meeting. Other items, if they're not quite ready for a vote yet, we may be asking administration to bring back more information. We may have some questions and answers that we need to discuss at a future committee of the whole meeting, and they will be brought forth in the future. So just so folks are aware. Frankly, I'm happy that those have joined us this evening or have tuned in from home because these, I believe, are really the meetings where you learn the most about the items of business that are coming before the board. This is where you're going to get the most in-depth discussion on these items. So, welcome. I do not have any blue slips. Is there any member of the audience that wishes to address the board this evening? No, seeing none. We're going to go into our next item committee of the whole. What I would like to do is to bring to everyone's attention the importance of a very, very important goal of the districts, and that is its respect, and that goes amongst our students, amongst our adults, and it absolutely lives in this board of education. We are welcome, folks, to participate in our meetings this evening and at any time, and we certainly encourage folks to model the behavior that we as a board of education commit to you, which is to treat everyone with respect in our district, and that starts at our board meeting. I'm going to turn our next item over to Mrs. Oakwist, Committee of the Whole, item two. Mrs. Oakwist.
Thank you, President Burton. I'd like to just take a moment to thank Stevenson High School for hosting us this evening. As we did last year, we had an opportunity tonight to take a sneak peek of the Performing Arts Center here that is being built at Stevenson. I know last year, one of the things the board enjoyed having the opportunity to do was see the work in progress, and we saw it at a similar stage this evening. So we had an opportunity with Plant Moran Cressa and AUC to lead us through a tour of the behind-the-scenes work in the PAC and the related areas. Tremendously impressed with the work being done and the continued commitment of our partners to just do such high-quality work. We are thrilled to be bringing this forward in the fall for an opening. We are on schedule, perhaps a bit ahead of schedule, but we will be ready to open the Stevenson PAC in the fall. And for any of our community members who have not had the opportunity to drive by recently, we've added the blue metal paneling and the glass out in front of the PAC, and it has certainly begun to take shape. So as many people have driven past for the past number of months saying, "What in the world are they building?" We are building quite a tremendous addition to this school that will benefit many, many, many of our students for years to come. So we thank Stevenson for hosting us. As we normally do, once we take that look, we then hold our meetings at the school following that sneak peek. So thank you to Stevenson for being our host. Thank you to our communications team and IT for getting us hooked up. So it's not always easy to do a live television feed remotely, so thanks to our team for getting that going. Thanks, President Burton.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is item three, Building in Sight. I would also like to mention to you, if you are here in the audience, I believe those folks have agendas there on the table, just to my left here. If you are following along from home and you would like a copy of our agenda for the evening, you can find one on our website, which is found at www.livoniapublicschools.org. If you hover over the Board tab, you can drop down to our agendas and follow along with us this evening. We are at item three, Building in Sight, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Burton. We only have two items under Building in Sight tonight. We're going to be talking about the Buchanan paving project and the Churchill tennis courts. And here to help us with that tonight is Mr. Francis.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I wanted to quickly echo Mrs. Oakwist's thanks to Stevenson High School and also mention the George AUC company, their construction manager took time out the past several days to help organize, and then he was our tour guide through the Stevenson pack. So I appreciate their coordination and their help as well. At this time, I think we want to start with letter A, Mr. Johnson.
We do.
Which would be the Buchanan paving project out of the sinking fund. I'd like to invite Mr. Scott Smith from Plant Moran Cressa, owner's rep, to come and join me up at the table here. Just to give you and the folks at home and those in the audience a little background, the Buchanan paving project, if I can go backwards a bit, was not originally planned to be a very large paving project. It was going to be a smaller project, but then with the addition of students that are going to be going to Buchanan, we took another look at Buchanan, looked at the parking lot. We have some finite space, but we did come up with some plans to repave it and redirect some of the traffic through it. So with that, it became a sinking fund item for this summer, summer of '17, to be done in time for fall, school to open. We had put this out for bid previously, did not have any bidders who qualified, they did not fill out the correct paperwork, et cetera. So we took it back out to bid. So I want to thank the board also for bearing with us. We're on a bit of a tight schedule now with regard to the board meetings and voting, so I do appreciate you bearing with us. And last Thursday afternoon, these bids were open, and then there was a bit of a flurry of activity Thursday afternoon and Friday. Mr. Smith was involved with it as owner's rep, and we had our partners at NTH who were working with us with the engineering, as well as our own folks in the district, LPS, Mr. Wayne Roberts taking part in some of the vetting, et cetera, to get ourselves ready to go for this evening. So with that, I do want to turn it over. I'll let Scott talk a little bit about the details up to that point, and I do want to mention that we do have a vendor recommendation for the Buchanan project this evening. You should have gotten, did we pass those out already?
We did.
You should have gotten the letters from Plant Moran Cressa, the recommendation letter from NTH, as well as the budgets, the bid tabs, et cetera. So we'll go through that with you right now. Go ahead.
Thank you, Phil. As Phil mentioned, the first part of this packet is the Buchanan repavement project, and that scope did grow a little bit. We worked with the district. We've got some influx of busing that's coming in to accommodate the additional students. We've worked with the existing layouts to add some drop-off areas that will help keep the students safe as they exit the buses and traverse their way into the schools. We've got some adjustments to the striping there, which we think will help with the traffic flow in and out of the lot. This is a rebid project. We received three bids for this project. These are bidders that we're familiar with and have bid similar projects in the past. Our low bidder was Nagel Paving. You may remember them. They've done a lot of work here in the district previously, and they're also recently been awarded a lot of the other, almost all of the pavement work. So if awarded, they'd have a very busy summer here in Livonia. They're a large company, probably one of the biggest pavers here in southeast Michigan. We have no issues or concerns with them. They're excited for the work. In fact, they're on the board for a couple, on the docket for a couple of awards tonight for consideration. They've even acknowledged that if, should they get this work, that they will not be bidding any additional work in preparation for this work to make sure that they can meet our guidelines and goals.
Yeah, they're going to be in the district already. If you recall, the five schools previously that were going to be paving, it was Nagel that is going to already be with us, so.
Nagel paving also had a voluntary alternate. As part of the work, we were installing a Geo Paver system, which is a permeable system that we've installed at other schools. This was simply an extension of that voluntary alternate we've accepted previously to use a different manufacturer. So there was an additional $4,500 savings that we accepted on top of their base proposal. Strictly in terms of numbers, we'd recommend them at, for a contract award of $219,290 with a 15% construction contingency and a total award recommendation of $252,184. This is a turnkey project. They would be the only contractor doing the work out there and propose to complete it this summer.
So Scott, one of the things, I know we had the opportunity to have our folks take a look at a number of different options as we took a look at this. And so as we looked at the traffic patterns and had NTH do some studies for us, they provided a number of different options for us to consider. Would you send to Phil unless we already have the final copy so we can include in the board's packet the layout of the lot as it will be designed with the traffic flow so the board can take a look at that as well between now and May 15?
And something I want to add to that, since you brought that topic up. We discussed these same types of ideas when we were discussing grant paving project, et cetera, several weeks back, and one of the questions was, were LPS people, were our folks putting eyes on the plans and having input in the plans, or was it just left to the engineers? And the answer is no. The engineers, the folks at NTH, they put together several plans, and then we sat down, Mrs. Scott, Mrs. Terrell, myself, we looked at them and said, "What makes sense for our K-4 students as far as where they would exit, where they would enter, how the buses would stack up, et cetera?" So it was a team effort between Plant Moran Cressa, NTH, and LPS, looking at these plans and saying, "We believe this would be the best for our needs, the best of the bunch for what we're looking for."
When you were going over those plans, did you consult with building level administrators too, just to kind of, sometimes they may have a little more intimate knowledge?
Sure. At Buchanan, it was a little difficult because the current principal isn't going to be the principal next year, and the principal that's going to be there next year isn't as familiar, so I did rely, yes, exactly. So I did rely on Mrs. Scott, who is the director of elementary, to sort of weigh in on, yes, around this, where the sidewalk would be, et cetera, et cetera, those types of details to make sure that we had eyes on what made the most sense for the kids.
So you feel very comfortable with the design?
Within the bounds that we can do, as we've discussed in the past, we can't pave a whole bunch of area. There are restrictions, Wayne County restrictions. We can't have impervious surfaces added and grow any larger than the lot that it is. So within the lot that it is, we are making the best decision based upon what the parameters that we're allowed to do and the facts that we have in front of us.
Great. Thank you.
Other questions? Did you have anything?
No, I think that's an important reminder is that, you know, on a repavement project, you're constricted to the area that you have. In order to accommodate some of the improvements we think we've made with the drop-offs, you know, we've had to shave portions of the lot off, maybe areas that we didn't feel were adding significant value to add more value to the drop-off area. So that's the important part is really, as Phil said, we're restricted to what was really there originally and the quantity of impervious area there without affecting drainage and other things that would require more additional due diligence, permitting, et cetera.
President Burton.
Just comment for the benefit of folks who may not know Buchanan as well as some of us do. The parking, or the drive into that building, which has been a request to widen, is owned on one side by a homeowner and owned on the other side by a church.
Correct.
So one of the reasons that we cannot expand, even though we would love to, is because we don't own the land on either side in order to make that into larger.
Correct. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? So this would be on the regular agenda. All right, jumping down to the Churchill tennis courts.
Churchill tennis courts. A little background on that one as well. As we've discussed in the past, they were, they are in difficult shape. We've had them patched in the past. That patching is separating again, so other decisions made to go out to bid to redo the Churchill tennis courts. I want to thank the folks at Churchill, their athletic director has been wonderful in working with us because this has been something with regard to timeline, et cetera, of getting it in for the summer of '17. And we did go out to bid at the same time as the Buchanan, the original Buchanan paving project. Again, the bidders did not qualify based upon missing documents, so we took it out to bid once again. We dissected it a little further, broke it into three separate items instead of one bundled package because there's the paving, there's the resurfacing, and then there's the fence and net. So originally, we had that bundled together in order to try to not limit ourselves to companies who could accomplish all of those aspects. We broke them apart into individual bids. So we are going to be bringing to you three different recipients this evening as recommended for this project. From there, I'll let Scott talk a little bit about the process they went through late last week when they opened up the bids and did the due diligence.
Again, as Phil mentioned, we did break this one down, so we are bringing three recommended bidders for consideration of contract award tonight. Nagel paving with the asphalt, they're doing all the demolition work, the asphalt, the regrading.
And that's the lion's share of this project, and you see the dollar amount, you see that the dollar amount is also the lion's share of building, but that's obviously the nuts and bolts of it.
I should also mention that too, this is really a complete reconstruction. The old tennis courts are going away. They're staying in generally the same spot, but we are, I think it's approximately 12 feet we're elongating it. The tennis courts themselves are currently in compliance, but this new layout will give us USTA spacing in between the courts, which is 12 feet. So we've elongated the existing courts by about 12 feet to gain compliance there. There is a significant amount of work though with the regrading. All of the asphalt will be taken down to the subgrade, rebuilt up with base course, all new fencing all the way around, and then an acrylic surface coating on the top. Again, we did break it down into those categories, hoping to control costs a little bit more. This is a little bit later than we'd like to be taking this project, but based on our discussions with the bidders, there's still capacity on their end and a willingness to complete the work per the schedule, which in this case, this schedule we do anticipate elongating through the month of September. Mr. Francis has been heavily involved with discussions with Churchill High School, working through some of the logistics of how that would come into play.
The discussion, so you know where we're at, based on timing, this project is going to start in the summer, but we allowed for longer time to finish. It wouldn't have to be ready in time for the fall tennis season, and that was through discussions with the athletic department at Churchill. They were, in those discussions, their preference was they could move practices, they could work around the fall schedule in an effort to have this done for the spring schedule. Otherwise, it would have been a summer of '18 program, and there weren't, according to the athletic director, there weren't any tournaments that were going to be hosted at Churchill this fall, but there will be potentially in the spring. There's some bigger items that are coming up in spring with your guys do spring tennis versus fall tennis. And the other two athletic directors at Stevenson and Franklin are working with the Churchill athletic director to help out with regard to practice, et cetera, and having away matches and whatnot. So it was really a joint effort and a joint decision of, do we do this now knowing that it will creep into September? But that's how you can get the companies to say, "We will and can do it because we have the time," whereas most of their school projects, they need to be done, you know, middle to late August, ready for school, whereas this, we told them it can go into September through the working and coordination with Churchill High School Athletics.
Questions and comments?
Because we're working so much with Nagel paving, how are they on the other side with customer service, follow-up, that sort of thing? Because they have so much of our business, has that been, are they good to work with in that piece of it? If there's issues to come back and help resolve?
Yeah, we've worked with Nagel paving and most people have. They're just such a dominant force here in southeast Michigan. We come across them all the time. They stand behind the work, they do good work, they have the manpower to man up as needed to get this done. If it rains for four days in a row, they will find a way to come in when it's dry and get the work done, and they've always done that. And that's kind of the nature of their business. They're bound by the weather, and when the weather's good, they really work really long hours. They do good work. They have their own plant, they have plant here in Livonia. There's a lot of things, advantages to working with Nagel paving.
And something in general, paving can't be done year-round. It ends November-ish, pretty much?
It varies, but yeah. Right around there.
So this was something that we're getting done in time, and then otherwise, it wouldn't be again until summer of '18. So there wasn't, there were only a couple of options, and again, I appreciate working together with Churchill to figure it out and trying to get done with our team and the building team to make it happen.
They've actually done the work at, they did giving work at Franklin High School, actually, over the last two summers as well.
When was the last time that these were resurfaced?
They were patched last year, but that's very different than the resurface. The resurface, I could go back and find in the history when they were done.
Okay, and the other facilities, Stevenson and Franklin, are they also going to be?
There's not a plan right now for them. We'll take these as they come. It's not something that we're saying, "We're going to just do all three at one time." Churchill was in the most disrepair, so it came up as the others, a patch might suffice, and that might get us down the road and then eventually do theirs. As we've talked with other items, it's actually better to keep them oftentimes separated, spaced apart versus doing all three at the same time because we know what's going to happen down the road is we're going to do all three of them again at the same time. So we'll take a better look at them. We knew that the number one need was Churchill. We decided to address that, and then we'll move forward. Oftentimes, where the cracks are, you may see cracks in the multi-court system, but it's where the cracks are, and if they're actually opening or going on level, which is the more dangerous portion. If there's a crack between courts, that's not the same. You may say, "There's a huge crack run in there," but that's between the courts, not in the playable surface versus larger cracks in the playable surface. So we'll, I guess the most honest answer is we'll take it as it comes.
Okay.
But I can look into the, we'll have to go back in the record and look at the dates for Churchill.
That'd be great.
Any other questions or comments? President Burton.
Again, for the benefit of the public, we can see this, but this is coming from the sinking fund, which are funds that are available only for significant repairs that need to be done, or replacements that need to be done to our buildings, and it's not money that's permissible to be used for other purposes.
Yes, as opposed to the road bond, this is sinking fund.
Correct. Or general fund money, which we have a lot of discretion on how we use it. Thank you.
Are you going over the other two parts?
Yeah, if I could, for the camera. So we are recommending three contractors, Nagel paving, which would be the demolition, the earthwork, the asphalt paving and such. Tonight, their bid amount is $486,775. We're also recommending Michigan Fence Outlet in the amount of $94,650. This would be all the perimeter fencing and the net posts as well. They do their own foundation work for that. And then Goddard Coatings would be the company we're recommending in the amount of $29,265, and that's really for the surface coating. They're one of the last guys in, and they'll apply that. So all in all...
Could you talk for a minute about coordination? Because we are talking about three different companies and how they're going to coordinate.
Soon, once all the, this really concludes kind of the big sinking fund project recommendations for the summer. We'll bring, we'll be having kickoff meetings here once everybody's under contract here probably in May. Just to kind of touch base, go through some things, there's a lot of posts or pre-construction type activities with coordination of submittals, what products are being used, make sure they're the appropriate ones that are specified. Everybody's getting to know each other, talk through the schedule, when the next person should be coming in, how much notice they need to make sure that they can hit those dates. We'll be bringing all the parties in, not just for these projects, but also for all the other projects that were previously awarded, the homes water main and all the various pavement replacement projects. And we plan to have continual meetings throughout the summer to make sure that we stay on task and people are well-versed in what's coming up or how things were impacted by weather or whatever's going on in the trades. But we don't anticipate anything. This is pretty much business as usual work this summer. These guys are, know the drill, and they're prepared to do the work.
Any other questions, comments?
If I could, Mr. Johnson, just both Mr. Francis and I, with this being kind of the last award for the sinking fund, I thought it'd be a good chance to kind of touch base and say, "Well..."
Not ever.
No, not ever.
Just to be clear.
How did this thing shake out? And basically, we plan on doing about $2.2 million worth of sinking fund work this summer based on our original estimates and budgets and high-level. With this award, this puts us right at about 2.15, and this is all the pavement replacement projects, the water main project from last go-around, as well as the two awards for tonight that we're recommending. So we're right there, and really, it's been a really good buy-in.
Yeah, we did quite well, you know, early on with the pricing with the paving projects, having them all bid out at the same time, et cetera. We got good pricing, we got good pricing on the water main. We've been fortunate on our bids, so it helped make that budget go even further with regard to these final two projects.
Right. The tennis courts originally maybe entirely wasn't projected to be done this summer, as well as the Buchanan scope, which grew as Mr. Francis discussed. All of that is now part of that 2.2 million. So I think for what, for the 2.2 million, we've actually got more out of it than maybe initially anticipated.
Wonderful. Appreciate that. Thanks. Okay, so this will be on the regular agenda. And strange is it not saying, President Burton, that's all we have.
That does seem strange, but we'll roll with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Francis, Mr. Scott. The next item on our agenda is item four, Finance Committee, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Bonifield.
Okay, thank you, President Burton. Our first item on our finance agenda today is the discussion of the '17-'18 budget, and Mrs. Smith will help us out on that.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to come before you and continue our discussion of the '17-'18 budget. To start, I wanted to explain where I started. I used our latest budget amendment for '16-'17, which was approved by the board in March as a starting point, and then made various adjustments for the projected impact of a few items. So first one being an increase in state aid. There's currently proposals out from the House, Senate, and the governor's office. We don't yet know how that's going to pan out, so I took the average of all three proposals and adjusted our revenues accordingly. Also included in our proposed budget is the effect of enrollment changes, also decrease in one-time '16-'17 revenues. This year, we received a one-time payment from Wayne Risa to help offset some of our special ed transportation costs, and they stressed to us that it was just a one-time payment, so I backed that out of our budget for next year. Initiatives made possible through the Wayne County Enhancement Village. We're still working to put some new things in place for next year, so we've adjusted our expenditures accordingly. Increase in health insurance cost. We recently got our numbers from Mesa, and we're projecting an increase to our general fund. Also, the budget has been adjusted for the change in employer contribution rates for the Office of Retirement Service, while the rate is only going up less than 1% because so much of our budget is salaries that has an impact, so we've budgeted accordingly. Next is the closure of Cass and Garfield. We were able to recognize some savings from the closure of those two buildings, and also the sale of property. We're hopeful that we'll have some properties closing in the next school year. Some numbers that are not included, we do have open contracts with many of our unions, and we don't yet know what the impact of that will be. Also, the change in at-risk funding. We were very excited when we first saw the numbers for at-risk. It looked like more money for the district, for our students, but as more information came out, we found out there was some strings that tied to that. So before, until we have a good idea of what that means for Livonia, we decided to leave out the change, and what is budgeted for next year is what we're currently receiving in at-risk funding. So again, I used our latest budget amendment as a starting point, so I'm projecting an ending fund balance as of June 30th of $11.1 million, so that's what we'll have to start the year off for '17-'18. And then I'm anticipating $146.3 million in revenues, expenditures of $147... expenditures of one-hundred-and-forty-seven million, and that would leave us with an ending fund balance for June of two thousand and eighteen of ten-point-four million dollars, or seven-point-one-two percent. So, this is something too, very fluid, you know, we're watching it daily with our enrollment, watching those numbers, and, you know, keeping an ear out for what's going to get approved by the state, too, as far as a change in funding. But we just wanted to keep you up to date on where we are today.
Okay. Questions? Mrs. Burton, President Burton.
Thank you. The Wayne County Enhancement Village, to date, we've been counting on a collection of about eighty percent. Is that still the case with what we know right now?
I actually just got some information from the county, and they were able to provide us with an updated amount based on how the collections have been coming in and what was actually levied, and what the tax, property tax values are. So, they are giving us a new number, and they're saying, based on what was actually levied, that we should be budgeting for three-hundred-and-thirty dollars per student. So, that works out to, I believe it was four-point-eight million dollars. So, and this, this budget actually, I believe it's a little shy of that, because we, when I put these numbers together, didn't have that information. So, I believe what's in here is four-point-five million dollars, so we'll be able to adjust, adjust the budget for that.
So, they're collecting a little bit better than eighty percent? It sounds like from this numbers. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Originally, when the village passed, we were hoping for three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars per student. So, it's less than what was originally estimated, but that estimate, again, was just a projected based on what the values were at the time. So, we've had some property values drop across Wayne County, so it had a smaller tax base, because it's still the two mills is what was levied, but what the unknown factor was at the time was what was going to be the actual property tax values that that two mills was levied on. So, now that we actually know that, we can say for two thousand and sixteen what was levied, it's going to work out to about three-hundred-and-thirty dollars per student in Wayne County.
And if I understand correctly, what, what was levied is not what we budgeted for immediately, because we were told that even though it was levied, until it's actually collected by Wayne County, we will not receive it.
Correct.
And at least a few months ago, that was eighty percent is what we were told to start to budget on, so...
Yep, and we're currently, I think the number is eighty-five percent.
Okay.
From what's actually been, we've collected four-point-one million dollars to date.
Okay.
Or hopefully more. More will come in before June thirtieth, too.
All righty.
So, as you know, before our, before our meeting in June, where we'll ask you to approve the budget, Allison shared with you the, the items for which we will continue to monitor, you know, we're monitoring our enrollment on a weekly basis, and so as we get new enrollees, as we find out students that are leaving, that, that number is carefully adjusted and monitored, and we will continue to do that, as you know, not only now, but throughout the summer, but for budgeting purposes, we'll continue to monitor that on a weekly basis. We continue to watch closely what's happening at the state level with regard to our foundation allowance specifically, and then also with regard to the thirty-one A at-risk funding. So, those pieces, in addition to the final collection by the time we get to June with regard to the Wayne County Enhancement Village, will all help formulate these, these numbers and solidify them prior to bringing the budget to you. But we will continue to update this on a weekly basis until the point where we're ready to propose a final budget to you.
Mrs. Burton?
I do have one other question. The employer contribution rate change, you said it looks like it's going to be a less-than-a-one-percent increase. What is a one-percent increase? What does that cost Levonia Public Schools?
What I was estimating for this employer change for just our general fund was an additional three-hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
Anybody else, questions?
Just a clarification, I, I think I missed it. When you talked about increase in health insurance costs, you said it will be an increase to the general fund, meaning an increased cost to, it wasn't an increase in the general fund, increased cost to the general fund, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Appreciate it very much. The second item on finance is computer purchases for the LCTC, and Mr. Archibald is going to work with this on that, and it looks like he wrangled Mrs. Smith to stay with him.
I did, she offered, so I took advantage of it.
All right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The item we're here tonight, the computers used for the website design and interactive media class and the mobile application and game development class at the Levonia Career Technical Center are in need of replacement. The current computers are six years old and considered to be obsolete with respect to being able to run the virtual reality and three-D technology being used in the industry today. The Program Advisory Committee, which includes professionals presently employed in the industry, along with the instructor, Mrs. Bush, have reviewed the current computers and have highly recommended that the hardware be replaced to provide students with quality, up-to-date technology that will better prepare them for post-secondary opportunities. Some of the neat things the students will do in these classes with the new computers, they create games, mobile applications, motion graphics, animations, three-D modeling, and in future plans include creating virtual reality games and applications. They are looking to purchase twenty-eight HP Z240 Tower CPUs, twenty-eight twenty-two-inch monitors, and additional RAM for all twenty-eight machines. The total cost is fifty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and eighty-four cents. The cost for all of this equipment is designated from the two thousand and sixteen-seventeen CTE added cost funds, and the computers that are being replaced will be repurposed within the Career Technical Center as they would benefit the other programs. So, with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. Mr. Archibald, in addition to the computers, is there need for additional software as well, either presently or in the near future?
Not presently as part of this purchase.
Allison, do you want to take a minute and just describe the, what CTE added cost funds are, so that this is not coming from our general fund, but it is coming from state-provided funds?
Yep. So, the Levonia Public Schools, we run a career and technical program, and the state will reimburse us for the additional cost to the district for adding, for running such a program. And so, this is part of our state aid that we receive, and as a rule, we need to use ninety percent of the funds that they give us for added costs of running the program. We can use the first ten percent to cover bulk ed teacher costs, but then the ninety percent need to be for items exactly like this, things that maybe a general classroom wouldn't have incurred, but because of the special program we're running, there's new and different needs, and so that's the source of the funds for this purchase.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. Do you know when this would be delivered?
I do not have a delivery date, but I would get that later.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Back to the CTE added cost funds, is that something you have to spend per year?
It is.
So, you have to spend the whole thing? And do you know how much money we would have left or that we have not spent yet?
I don't know that number, but I can get that number for you.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just thought I'd point out, and the board may remember, that at the last board meeting, we acknowledged two of our LCTC students coming from these classes who won a contest in Warden Game Design at the University of Michigan Dearborn, and they both won a scholarship. And last year, we also had students from this program. So, it's exciting to see this type of equipment, being able to enhance their experiences even further.
Okay. Anybody else?
This will need to go on the May fifteenth meeting, the regular budget.
I'm so sorry. That concludes finance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith, Mr. Archibald. The next item on our agenda is item five, Policy Committee, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Frank.
Thanks so much, Mrs. Smith. You're not going to go too far yet. We're going to talk about our new purchasing card policy for the district.
I'm passing around, as we discussed in our last study session, was a proposed new board policy on purchasing cards, and this has been a request, you know, I've heard from the building administrators for a while, so we've started exploring it. Currently, there's a purchasing card consortium through the Michigan School Business Officials, and the current vendor is Chase, and there's a lot of advantages to offering a purchasing card program, one of the main ones being that they offer a rebate, and so this would be a revenue generator for our district, as well as meet some needs out in our buildings. Our first preference is always to make purchases through a purchase order, but we recognize that there, on occasion, are needs that come up, you know, kind of on a last-minute basis. So, what this purchasing card will allow us to do is give our administrators the opportunity not to spend funds out of their pocket. Also, this card will be embossed with like the tax ID status, so that when they go to make purchases, they'll be able to make tax-exempt purchases with the card. So, before we pursue implementing a program, one of the requirements is to adopt a board policy. So, we read through it last week, and there were some proposed changes, so we made those changes. I wanted to read that to everybody to see if we, if we captured what the intent was. And I do want to mention, what I passed around was the board policy as well as the administrative procedures. I would like to add some more detail to the administrative procedures, so I'll continue to do that, and when those are updated, bring those back for your review. But I thought tonight, we could read through the proposed board policy, and again, see if this captures what you were hoping to see, and if there's any changes you'd like to make, I'd be happy to do so. So, I'll read through that right now. The Board of Education views the use of, just realized I'm looking at a copy. My apologies. Thanks. The Board of Education views the use of credit cards as a convenient and efficient means of transacting school district-related business. The Board authorizes the issuance and use of school district credit cards within the parameters set forth in the administrative policies recommended by administration and reviewed by the Board of Education. The superintendent and/or the superintendent's designee shall be responsible for, for the issuance, accounting, monitoring, retrieval, and general oversight of the use of district credit cards by employees.
Do you want to share a little bit of background from our study session for the sake of our discussion here with regard to some of those parameters with regard to who would be utilizing the cards for what purpose, and then how, how you would be monitoring that use and what the requirements would be of the school?
Perfect. Yes, there's a lot of safeguards in place with the purchasing card, and what's so nice is that a lot of districts across the state are using this, so they've, the ideas that they've had and the things that they've learned through running the program have been incorporated. So, for instance, the use of credit limits is very big, and we'll have online access so that we can change that as needed on a daily basis, on an hourly basis, so that is one control in place. The cards would be issued to just the building administrator, so in our buildings, that's usually the principal, and then the principal would be ultimately responsible for keeping that card safeguarded. Another benefit, or another control in place is the use of merchant, I want to say they call it merchant codes, but you can make things, certain things unallowable. For instance, the card couldn't be used at casinos, you can make, you know, the casinos not an allowable thing, so there's another way of putting controls in place. Their credit cards would be paid off at the end of every month, and the buildings would be required to submit detailed receipts outlining what account should be charged. Also, we'd be asking our buildings to explain, you know, why a purchase order wasn't used. This purchasing card is not meant to replace the purchase order process, this is meant more on an emergency basis for things that come up, or for instance, for vendors that don't accept purchase orders. I know one example of, that the buildings gave me was a site called Teachers Pay Teachers, you know, and that's where the teachers can go get ideas, lesson plans. They don't currently accept purchase orders, but the building administrator would be able to use a purchasing card to pay for that, and then the teacher wouldn't need to be, you know, out-of-pocket any funds, and then that would be reconciled on a monthly basis. We want to start off and be very stringent on the rules and make sure that they're followed. If a reconciliation is not submitted on a timely manner when it is due, the card will be frozen, and it won't be activated again until we're in receipt of that reconciliation. So, yeah.
Dan?
Allison, last week, you described some, some limits that could be set, perhaps on a daily level?
Mm-hmm.
Almost sneezed, okay. The, and those can be adjusted by you appropriately if there are larger or smaller purchases that need to be made. Could you just describe that?
Sure. Yeah, typically, I think what districts will do was, will set a limit at like a thousand dollars, but if you, if the administrator were to call the business office and make a case for a larger purchase, for instance, you know, they would get approval first for that, and then I would be able to go in online and temporarily bump the credit limit to, say, fifteen hundred dollars so that they could make their purchase. This is something, too, that we would be monitoring on a daily basis, the accounts payable, staff would be looking at this, just to make sure that all the activity that is happening is indeed allowable, that there isn't any misuse of the funds. And again, I think by giving our building administrators all of the, say, rules, but, you know, guidance on what's allowable use, I hope will, will keep us from running into any problems with this program. And I definitely want to start it, you know, very small, just one card per building so that people can get comfortable with it. I think it probably can, you know, get away from you if you're issuing a card to everybody, you know, that would be, you know, a lot to oversee. So, we definitely want to start small so that we're, you know, comfortable with how the process is established and how it's working.
Any other questions? Mrs. Bonnefield? Mrs. Smith, can you just talk about some of the benefits of having the card and hopefully the workload reduction? I, I know sometimes it, if you're not in that process with, in a business situation, that it may seem that it's more work, but just talk a little bit about the savings on time for your staff, how that works with the accounting system?
Perfect. Yeah, there's actually, so currently, how we pay for things, it's either through a purchase order or through a check request. With a purchase order, it's typically our building secretaries that are having to type that, you know, get quotes, attach that. Then, when they receive the goods, they submit a receiver, and then it comes over to accounts payable who's reviewing it and then processing the payment. The other option is a check request, and the way the check requests currently work out, most of the buildings will type up a word document, and then that gets sent via mail over to the accounts payable office, who then re-enters that information. So, currently, it's quite time-consuming. We run a lot of checks, you know, every week, and what's so nice about this purchasing card is it does take away, not take away, it saves time with that, so that you're making one payment for the credit card instead of maybe paying, you know, two-hundred vendors this month, we're making one payment to, to Chase, for instance, to pay off that bill. And one nice thing about this is we're not losing any of the detail of just paying one vendor, for instance, when you see the bills for payment, you're not just going to see one line item for fifty thousand dollars to Chase. You'll still see all of the detail, you'll see the vendors that the card was used at, so we still maintain the integrity of our general ledger.
Just, if you could just clarify for us as well, that, maybe talk a little bit about our, the spending habits, that this is not increasing our spending, it's just changing the way or changing the requirements, all the same, it just happens to be an updated process for, for making payment, that this isn't going to increase spending?
Exactly. I wish that we had a magic pot of funds, I wish we found more money, but we don't. We still are in a world where we're very closely monitoring our budgets. This is not a new source of spending for the buildings, they don't get an additional allocation. They don't get an additional allocation to use the credit cards with. It'll be within their current budget allocations. They currently get allocations per pupil for teaching supplies, and per staff member for office supplies. And we still encourage our buildings to use the purchase order process whenever possible. But again, this is in recognition that we realize that certain things, you know, come up last minute, or again, some vendors don't accept it. So that's why we're pursuing this. And again, one of the advantages, I do think, is that revenue, that it will generate revenue for us, rebate. And maybe that's funds that we can set aside to further bring process improvements to the district, so.
This is sort of my bailiwick here. One of the other things is, you mentioned briefly, but just to clarify, right now, if the teachers pay out-of-pocket, and they go to Myers, or Costco, or Best Buy, or Office Depot, and they will wind up paying sales tax at the register, and the district is not allowed to reimburse the sales tax portion of that purchase, correct? And so that winds up actually being yet another out-of-pocket expense for our teachers.
I know, our current policy, we do not reimburse sales tax because we are a tax-exempt organization. So yes, when teachers make purchases out-of-pockets, or administrators make purchases out-of-pocket, the sales tax is not reimbursed.
Okay. And this will help to alleviate the additional burden we have on our teachers? Okay. And can you just talk about one more thing for me?
Sure.
And actually, this is, I was dealing with this on Thursday, is that I was at a client, and the card was, the ID was stolen on the card, and there was a fraudulent charge on the card. And just talk a little bit about how the reconciliation process, and being able to watch online, and how that is the way that we actually wind up catching those fraudulent charges, and taking that, canceling the cards, and getting that all. We don't need, as long as we're paying attention, the cards may be misused. I don't know what the right word is. There may be fraudulent charges, but it gets caught right away and taken care of.
Yep. This will, we will be monitoring this on a daily basis. That'll become part of our process, so that we can look at the vendors, where the card's being used, as well as amounts, to see if anything stands out as unusual, so that we can respond right away. And again, having the parameters in place that the card can only be used at certain types of vendors, I think will also help on cutting down any misuse or fraudulent use of the card. So, yeah, we have a lot of things in place. So not only will there be daily monitoring of the credit cards, but also a very thorough monthly reconciliation before that credit card is paid. So that every transaction is approved by the administrator, which is our current process. There's multiple levels of approval needed. So those won't be going away with this new purchasing card.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else?
Yes, President Burton? A couple of things. The verbiage that was in our packet, in red, states the administrative procedures, which is correct. The verbiage that was read tonight says administrative policies. This is just a semantics, but it is administrative procedures. The policy is the board, the procedures is administrative. So we need to make sure that it does say administrative procedures, as instead of administrative policies.
Thank you. I will make note of that.
You're welcome. And then--
Actually, President Burton--
Yes?
I would note that the one that was actually in our packet for tonight does say procedures.
Yes.
That is the correct one.
That is the correct one. The one that was read tonight verbally said administrative policy. So just, just so we make sure that we got the right one that goes through.
Yeah. And I apologize, that was--
That's okay.
I think what was in your packet, instead of saying board policy on the top, said administrative procedures on the top? So that was me making a last-minute adjustment--
Ah, there we go.
Obviously going too fast.
I didn't catch that one.
It should say board policy.
Yeah. Okay. And then, two items tonight that I'm, that we discussed at our last week's study session, and I'm pleased to hear that are going to be strictly held to. It is not the board's position to dictate the verbiage in administrative procedures. However, we do say that this, that we are going to approve this policy with the review of administrative procedures. Personally, I would be more comfortable if we had some kind of verbiage in the administrative procedures that stated what you gave verbally, which is that folks are going to be encouraged to use a purchase order whenever possible. And that there's some credit limit information in our administrative procedure. I can understand why that does not really need to be, it's not more, it's not really appropriate to be in board policy, because over time, that number may flex. And it takes a couple of months to change a board policy, but it doesn't take a couple of months to change an administrative procedure. While we are all very, very comfortable with the restraints that you've described to us, I would just like to see those two pieces of restraint in writing, wherever you see fit to put them, and in whatever language you see fit to put them. But I really do want some kind of credit limit information in there, and that we are still encouraging folks to use a PO when possible.
That is a wonderful suggestion.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. In echoing what President Burton says, we are not in a position to dictate what goes in the administrative procedures. But I would recommend, under issuance, to start the sentence with the word "certain." So it's certain district employees may be issued, so that you're coming off right from the start, saying this is not for everybody.
Mm-hmm. Good suggestion. I'll make note of that. Anything else?
President Burton needs a clarification?
Yes, go ahead.
So you're suggesting that in addition to the section in red that was added, that we would make reference that these administrative procedures include information such as daily credit limits, and then also encouraging the use of staff to continue to use purchase orders as the primary means of purchase?
I would be, for myself personally, I would be fine whether or not that is reflected in board policy, or if it's simply the board policy is left as it was read tonight, and those two items were included in administrative procedures. Because the board policy, as it is recommended, says that we will approve this based on our review of administrative procedures.
Yes.
I'm perfectly fine to have the encouragement to have, to continue to use a PO, and the credit limit as you see appropriate, to have those listed in administrative procedures. And frankly, they're probably more appropriately listed in administrative procedures. I'm fine with that, if that's the only place that they appear. I would just like them to appear somewhere, in writing.
Okay. So you did not want reference to those added to the board policy? You just want to be certain--
Right.
Prior to finalizing the administrative procedures, they're included?
Right. Because the board policy says that we will, let's see here. That, yeah. Within the parameters set forth in the administrative procedures, recommended by us administration, and reviewed by the Board of Education. So having them only in administrative procedures is perfectly fine with me. I just want them in writing somewhere. I mean, we've had extensive discussion now, last week, and again tonight. And I think we're comfortable with those tight restraints. But lest we're all not here 50 years from now, I'd like somewhere for that to be recorded officially, so other folks can follow those same requirements, or change them as they see fit.
So we'll certainly get revised, updated administrative procedures then to you in your board update?
Thank you.
Anything else? Are we all set? Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Smith. That wraps up policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith and Mrs. Frank. The next item on our agenda is Item Six, Curriculum Committee, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Bradford.
Thank you, President Burton. Tonight, we only have one item on the agenda, and that is a textbook update. And our presenter tonight will be Teresa O'Brien.
Good evening. How are you? I'm here again to share with you where we're at with our textbook needs. I met with you last week and shared a broad picture of several years of not having a full textbook budget, and the hole that we've gotten into. And Mrs. Alice also shared the same thing a little over a year ago. Over $6 to $7 million, if we were to do everything all at once, which we can't. And then you asked for me to take that prioritized list and give you a possible three-year plan. And so Ben Hillard and Christine Finkel and I, and we have given you a possible three-year plan. It doesn't have everything that we would want, that you would want, but it does have a targeted need trying to balance both elementary and secondary, electives, and general courses. Especially the first year, it has some things that we already have some committee work being done. And so there are some things that are there. So if you think back to a year ago, we have adopted the new math program for this year, so at the end of last year's budget. This year, we've adopted Algebra I on our budget. And also, at the end of last year, we adopted AP Chemistry and AP Biology. So when you look at this for the '17-'18 year, so this takes into account Mr. Hillard and Mrs. Finkel's time to do textbook adoptions, and then, you know, the amount of groups that they can run. So we've got, one, the geometry book is already being ready to recommend to you for next year's budget. So the committee work is done. Secondary administrators need to be able to look at that, and then we'll be bringing that for your approval. But as you can see, there's several for this first year that we started the curriculum review process, but we don't have the funds to do the textbooks for those. The foreign language, what we met with Mr. Miga? Mr. Miga, I believe is his name? He recommended that we look at our Level One courses for all three languages, German, French, and Spanish all at once, and then move to Level Two, rather than adopt Spanish as a whole, French as a whole. So he suggested that we do it that way. That way, then we'll meet more kids' needs sooner. And so each year's total is approximately the same. They're not exactly the same. And again, we try to meet secondary and elementary full courses plus electives. So what questions do you have?
I'm going to just pop in for a moment on the money aspect. So as you know, just as a reminder, when we spoke at the study session last week, for the past couple of years, textbook budget has been $400,000. That is significantly lower than it had been many years ago, where we had approximately a $2 million budget per year to continue a regular textbook adoption process, at which time, we were able to continue through that on a cycle of anywhere from eight to 10 years. As you know, over the past number of years, that is a budget that has been cut considerably. And for a couple of years, there were zero dollars in the textbook adoption budget. So over that period of time, we're seeing the cumulative effect of not only a decreased budget, but again, years when we did not have a budget allocated. Therefore, as Mrs. Alice shared last year, and Mrs. O'Brien shared this year, overall, we're in a $66 to $7 million range of overall need. As we talked about last week, we shared with you some of the greatest priorities, and one of the things you had asked for was, what might that look like each year for the next three years? So as you know, with the Wayne County Enhancement Village, one of the commitments that we made was to update our instructional resources available to staff and students. And so we, I appreciate Mrs. O'Brien and her team continuing to work through this process and to go through that priority. Because we did talk about, the textbook adoption process, as outlined in our board policy, is very thorough. And so it takes an extensive review of not only curriculum, to be certain that it's meeting our current standards, but also the textbooks that are available, to have an opportunity to pilot those in the classroom, gain feedback from both staff and students, and go through that entire process, and then finally, make recommendations to you. So this is a pretty ambitious look at that over the next three years, but something they feel is doable. So this is the initial look. We're asking you to take a look at. One of the things we talked about last week was, would it make sense to start with recommendation from you on how much of our funds we were willing to augment the current budget again, which is $400,000? How much would we be looking to utilize from the Wayne County Enhancement Village to add to that? And you had asked for us to bring forth to you a recommendation with regard to the greatest needs, and what that could look like. So from here, once you have an opportunity to review this over the next couple of weeks, what we would be looking for is direction from you on whether or not financially, we're within the ballpark of where you are comfortable being this year with regard to our budget. And then we will adjust from there. So if, for instance, you say, you know, total, I'd like to be in this particular range, then the team will go back and take a look at where the greatest priorities, even within this prioritized list.
Mrs. O'Brien? I'm looking at the first-year totals at $1 million to $1.2 million. And I'm assuming that that's an increase of $6,000 to $8,000, not an increase. So we've already got planned $400,000.
So our budget is 400?
Correct. So we're increasing the budget, not, we're not going up to $1.4 million.
Right. So what Mrs. O'Quinn just said. So I just gave you a range of what we feel like we could do in a year. That doesn't mean we can afford to do that in a year, but this is--
Right. Well, my question is, this is not additional textbook dollars. This includes--
This includes my budget.
The $400,000.
Yeah, this includes the $400,000. Correct.
Any other questions? Mrs. Burton?
And this also takes into account the amount of time that it takes to research the appropriate textbook recommendation, which is not a snap decision. We recognize that this board has approved enough textbooks that the public may not be realized, but it really is a many-month process to make sure we're purchasing the appropriate texts that will be aligned with our curriculum and will carry our district for many years.
Correct. Mr. Hillard and Mrs. Finkel and I met for several hours going through like what they felt they could, how much time each textbook committee would take. An elective would be a little bit shorter, smaller group of teachers to work with. Obviously, you know, 7th grade social studies would be a larger group. So they have budgeted out what they feel their amount of time through a school year to meet with a committee to come to those recommendations, yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
We talk about the lengthy process, and I absolutely appreciate the fact that we take that time to do that. My question is, when was the last time that process was revamped? And under the circumstances, do we need to update the policy? Or do something differently? Or are we comfortable with where the process is? I'm not sure the last time that process was updated, be it a year ago, 10 years ago, and if that's still the prudent approach.
I think we can certainly take a look at that policy. What I would say is, I think this is something that, it's a significant expenditure, and one that is meant to last for many years. And so the due diligence with which our staff works to come to that recommendation, in my opinion, is certainly warranted. But we can certainly look at the policy to see if there's anything that really ties our hands, or elongates the process more than necessary. So I think it's a great question. We can certainly take a look at that. But what I will say is, you do want thorough time for review of the materials for use in pilot with students and staff, review of teacher resource materials, and then time to negotiate with those publishers with regard to price and so on. But we can absolutely take a look at it. Great question.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I guess, now, the books that you've chosen, it depends on the longevity, how long or old they are. Did you, you took that into account per year, as you did this? In other words--
How old each of these texts are? So these are the same prioritized texts that are the oldest in each content era that I brought you last time?
Okay.
And then we prioritize from those how three years could work. So they are still our most current needs.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Mrs. Frank?
So as we look over this, a lot of them are more advanced levels of study. And I think that you said that you balanced it with some of the younger grades. But some of the younger grades don't necessarily use textbooks. We don't see a lot of kindergarten, first, and third grade on here, because they're not actually using physical textbooks. Is that the correct answer?
So the math book is the biggest textbook in elementary school. But as you can see, in the second year, that we are looking at social studies for 3rd through 6th. Kindergarten through 2nd grade social studies is typically taught as a part of community building. It's a part of reading and writing. a part of reading and writing. So it's a little bit, it's not as like a textbook needed. Small leveled readers that are about friendship and community and family. And then science, we're looking at in the third year, elementary science. So there are those pieces. So we have some, you know, we did try and balance those things. We have some needs, you know, and so we didn't want to make, we wanted to make sure we felt like if we were given this additional money that we shared it with everyone between the grade levels.
Okay. Any other questions? Mrs. Burton?
This is just a point that I try to bring up for the benefit of the public whenever we're talking about purchasing textbooks and certainly this is a large dollar document that we're looking at right now. We are frequently asked, why don't we just go to online? Because with the connotation that online is free. But just so the public understands that an online text is not free. It is the same, generally the same cost as a physical book. If we purchase the online, we get the physical books for free. If we purchase the physical books, they'll give us the online for free. The cost is not in the cardboard and the paper or the CD. The cost is in the knowledge that went into creating the document. So it's, while we will likely get both when we make that purchase, we don't have the option of going with an online version and therefore saving the district money to do that.
Correct. That is, you know, that is something I myself in coming into this role looked into thinking online textbooks, online books for kids to read, and yet the money is the same right now. So maybe someday it's going to become more norm and therefore more affordable, but just the algebra textbook that we just adopted, we could have bought the online and gotten the textbooks for free or bought the textbooks and got the online for free. It was, it was the same.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. So you're saying that if we buy, whether we buy the electronic or the standard paper hardback, they'll throw in the other version? Has thought been given to buying half as many and supplementing with the other medium?
Nope. Have not thought of that. I think one of the things in talking to Mr. Hillard was, you know, kids being able to access things at home seems to be the thing, they don't want to take that book home. And so then if only half the kids can access it online, who do we decide gets it online? And, because I was asking those same questions as someone new in this role is, it just seems to me, it just seems to me, but at this particular point in time, the way publishing companies are working, they're not giving you that break. But certainly as we would go through each content area, that could be something we talk about, would it be a benefit to do less? And then the question becomes, who would get what?
We have so many different things in our classrooms already. We purchased tablets and Chromebooks and so on, and it seems that that might be one way to implement those devices that we've already purchased. And if we were to get electronic, you know, a split between hardcover and electronic books, they could use them both simultaneously in the classroom-
Mm-hmm.
...since we already have the technology for that.
Yep. It's a great thing to think about.
Any other questions?
My only concern with that, I think it may present some instructional challenges, but, you know, it's certainly a unique approach, so you're always coming up with ways to save money, so thank you for that. But I do wonder, I think in practical terms, that might present some challenges if you have, again, some students who are working from a physical text and some working from electronic, but-
Could it be worth looking into, out of the box thinking?
Okay. All right. So, oh, Mrs. Frank?
Sorry. NGSS?
Next Generation Science Standards. So they just came out and we're beginning to align our current science curriculum to those.
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry.
That's okay. We'll know for next time.
Okay. This will just be, this is not being put on any agenda.
It is not. We will continue to ask for your feedback as part of the budget process.
Okay.
And so we'll bring options forward to you that will include different dollar amounts with regard to next year's textbook budget as augmented by funds from the Wayne County Enhancement Village.
Okay.
And you can determine, based on this information, we'd like to give you some time to take a look at it, to certainly ask Mrs. O'Brien any follow-up questions that you have. And then as part of the budgeting process, we'll continue to make recommendation options to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien and Mrs. Bradford. The next item on our agenda is item seven, Personnel. Mr. Senators, I do not have any items. Do you have anything?
We do not.
Mrs. Oakley, anything? We do not. No? Already. And number eight, Legislative. Mrs. Jarvis, I don't have any items. Do you have anything?
No, I don't. Mrs. Oakley, do you have anything?
We do not. We do not. This may go down in history as one of the shortest committee of the whole that we've had, at least in many years. We have reached the end of our agenda this evening. We thank you for joining us or for tuning in at home. We encourage you to take a much needed Monday night off next week and join us on May 15th for our next general or voting meeting for the Loney Public Schools Board of Education. Have a nice evening. You are adjourned. We are adjourned. You guys may go home whenever you want.